Calling these uh calling this uh. Planning Commission, planning and traffic commission uh in order for uh Wednesday, January twenty second at uh six thirty six. Normally begin with a roll call. Oh, thanks.
Your person, you met him?
Two.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Winkler? Commissioner Kuriel?
Here.
Commissioner Body and Commissioner Pedraza Baxter are absent.
Um pledge of allegiance?
Please back.
Ready to begin. Uh any adjustments to the uh to the agenda tonight?
Um there are no adjustments to the agenda.
Uh with there be no adjustments, uh we will go ahead and move on to public appearance. B one matters not appearing on the agenda if you wish to address the uh planning commission concerning any items not appearing on the agenda. And within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And that uh at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on a person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. You have uh anything you? Okay, now the uh public appearances, do we have anything recorded?
Oh, I don't believe we, nobody submitted any before the meeting, right?
Alright, uh there being no uh nobody here uh on the floor and uh nothing submitted. We will move on to the consent uh calendar. C one approve uh planning commission uh meeting minutes for uh September twenty fifth. Uh so many months, months ago.
Yeah.
As we just addressed a little while ago. Um everybody take a, get a chance to take a look at that?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to uh approve the planning commission meeting minutes from September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
My second.
Having uh. Second that and brought uh for approval.
Chairperson Rivera?
Oh, okay, alright, then I was, I was. Is um. Is uh I also uh go go ahead and uh approve for that is um. Let's see a consensus, right?
She's gonna take a vote, I think.
I'm gonna do the roll call.
Okay.
Chairperson Rivera?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Winkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Body?
Um I'm gonna abstain.
Commissioner Kuriel?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you.
Okay, uh so uh we pass it's uh approved, uh moving on to uh. Consent agenda D traffic commission new business discussion action recommendation. Uh and or deny uh D one loading zone for uh para transit services at Imperial Village Apartments. Uh reports.
Chairman, Chair and and Commissioners, um the city of Imperial has received a request from the Imperial County Transportation Commission. To establish a dedicated loading zone to accommodate their para transit services specifically. I V T access and I V T right. Um these um services are essential uh for individual with individual individuals with disabilities. And um senior citizens, um the services they operate on demand response basis with a fixed schedule. Uh we also received um. Well, we also uh have received concerns from from the residents of the senior uh housing. Um not having a bus loading zone within this their facility. Um they they since there's there's no dedicated bus stop um loading zone within the area. Um the buses will drop them off wherever they can. Um so before you um we are proposing a bus stop loading zone. Of a forty five feet long along eleventh street. Um that will also leave two parking spaces of a nine by twenty um that can be utilized by the residents as well. Um the cost of the uh these measures will be in the five hundred dollar uh figure. Um and stat recommends um the signage and the loading zone uh is proposed on there on your exhibit day. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, I was wondering, does it have a fixed schedule or fixed hours of operation?
They have hours of operations, both of them services, um but they they respond on on demand services. So you call them and you already know what time they're gonna be picking you up, um so you'd be ready for it.
How's it that we missed this, did we overlook this in the planning stage?
Um they, well, they have parking along um Imperial Avenue, they have parking along tenth street and eleventh street. And then have parking within their facility. My understanding is they're having issues going into the facility to pick them up and drop them off. So they they have a, I believe, a twenty six feet long bus. So it's kind of like difficult to maneuver within the parking area, within the facility. So they requested to have that placed um either along tenth or eleventh street. Um initially, when when they request at an area, it's a, they request a forty feet long area for them, those buses.
So originally, we had pictured that the bus would come into the parking area and that would be done in in the parking?
In the parking, correct. Um I I guess we're, you know, a little bit of oversight, what if they're ahead, too much ahead. Um but we're at this stage just in which we 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 have the ability to fix it.
Okay, yeah, no, not not a problem, um I I being the outsider, I I would have possibly thought that more of the residents. Would be using the uh the mobile service as compared to actually having their vehicles and um. But again, that, you know, that's the outside looking in, the the planners, they they look at these things differently. Um, Skuriel?
Is this more of a permanent situation or is this a temporary fix for now just so they can utilize the transit?
No, this is more of a permanent solution for it, yeah, well, um and we're gonna be keep keep an eye on it, um see if it's, you know. Uh if it's the right location or not, we'll be in contact with I C T C. In a, you know, quarterly basis or whatnot.
This would uh take up two s- two car, two vehicle spaces?
Take two.
Did you speak with the service that provides the buses to pick up the residents? Taking their appointment or senior activity or whatever that if it's gonna work for them?
Yeah, directly with them, no, but it's I C T C was the point of contact and thus they're the ones that provided um with what they need. Um they're the ones in contact directly with those services.
Okay.
I I, yeah, they're not directly.
Okay, so this is a subbing out, so you you're going to Imperial County Traffic?
County Transportation Commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, got it.
Commissioners, we do have an I C T C representative here, Gustavo Gomez, if you have any questions for him.
Okay, can he step forward?
Good afternoon, everyone, uh my name is Gustavo Gomez, I'm a senior transportation planner at the Imperial County Transportation Commission. I'm open to answer any questions uh you have regarding this matter. Uh we have received several um not complaints but suggestions for uh residents that live in the in the senior apartment facilities here in Imperial. Uh for them, it's it's kind of sometimes difficult to um be left or or picked up closer to the facility. And that wa- that's why they were kind of recommending a space closer to where the entrance is to the facilities. Um and all the information was the was provided, it's correct, um all the services I V T right, which is for senior citizens. And I V T access, which is uh for a person with disability, um are both on demand. So let's say they can call one or two days beforehand, um they let them know they wanna be picked up at a specific time. Um in a specific location, in this case, it would be the senior apartments. Um so they're pretty much just waiting for the bus or on the lookout for the bus. Uh but essentially, when there's parks, cars parked there, there's really no way for the bus to be close to it. As it was mentioned, the the bus does measure foot twenty six feet um wide long, um so. In order to accommodate for the space, um it is required forty foots um for for the bus in this instance. Um and it wouldn't be um I guess on a a recurring basis because it essentially just pick up whenever reservations are made. It wouldn't be going there every single hour of the day, it would just be on a reservation basis.
I have a question, um you worked with the C- City of Imperial Planning Department. And Mr. Commissioner Kuriel pointed out, was this gonna be temporary or permanent? And uh. We're being told by Mister Orthon that it is going to be permanent. So does that agree with your um aspect that it's a good location? So we don't have to worry about testing it out and then spending money to move it to another location because it doesn't work?
Yes, uh we did talk it over with our transit operator, in this case, there are transdev who operate the services. Um we kind of went over the map and making sure that location is adequate for uh dropping off and and picking up uh passengers in that location. Um and we do agree that it's a good location because it's the closest entrance to the facility. Um and it's not really um hindering any other um opportunities around the area. Um and as I mentioned, uh passengers are also kind of recommending that that's the closest space. And also because of the rail that is close by, um it allows people to kind of use them as support if needed.
Yeah, cuz I also was thinking um accessibility, right? I mean, we gotta look at the best interest for the for the residents themselves, especially um for the elderly there. Um I mean, we do have a five foot sidewalk from, appears to be a five foot sidewalk, so. I mean, accessibility for wheelchairs and pa- you know pedestrians or whatnot, so and that's what I was kind of looking at as well.
Was there, was there any data on how often you guys get calls to go to that complex?
We do have um, I I guess what we call daily manifest of reservations that are made um in the city of Imperial. And also, I guess, everyday users from that specific location. Um I don't have the data with me right now, but I can definitely provide it if needed, um as I mentioned. It it's always on demand, so whenever somebody needs a reservation from there, they can essentially request it. Um and as I mentioned, I V T right, it's for the city of Imperial, but they can travel to Alcentro and Heber. Um and using I V T access, which is the para transit service, they can essentially travel to any part of the county if they need to.
Now, Steph, the one question, this, you know, we we talked about um. The the service, what about, let's say, the the medical vans that need to to pick up? Uh that's that's accessible to them, right? I mean, anybody that's that's gonna pick up?
It is accessible.
I mean, I I think we're looking at one thing right now, but a- actually, it just ev- I I see. Like like I said, when I saw that project, I saw more people using um the the I V transit, the medical transport uh services. Those kind of things, so I mean, to me, it it kind of went hand in hand. Um but I just wanna make sure that this encompasses everybody that needs to get picked up uh from a mobile service.
Yes.
Okay, alright. Do you have something?
Answered my question that it's gonna be permanent.
Yeah.
And it's already been analyzed and don't have to do a test. It's gonna happen and we're not gonna spend more money by moving it somewhere else.
I as it was mentioned, it's essentially not gonna be like a bus stop, it's gonna be like a drop off loading zone. So anybody can use it, um and the bus would kind of use it, use it for the space required to to kind of drop off and pick up people from there.
Okay.
Okay, alright, yeah, um you guys have anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um Steph, uh I think to the last question that we have, uh uh did we have any uh opposition, we have any any word of feedback from the community? In regards to uh any concerns?
We didn't receive any.
Didn't receive any, we're good. Um I don't see any reason to to hold this up, I mean, I I think it's it's pretty clear cut, uh it is. Uh just the nature of the project of the of the housing, uh it it's something that, you know, I I think we've we've kind of. Kind of in a broad way discussed, you know, we we should have looked at it, we should should have picked that up. Uh there's no, there's no reason to really delay this anymore, let's uh. Unless you guys have anything else, you guys have anything else to to discuss on this or you you go ahead and put it to a vote, so.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, I guess, are we just calling it the loading zone for para transit services at Imperial Valley, Imperial Village Apartments on eleventh street?
That that's good, yeah, that's perfect, to approve it, to approve.
I second it.
Alright, it's been uh first, it's been seconded.
Roll call, uh Chairperson Rivera?
Uh I uh. Yes.
Vice Chairperson Winkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Body?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuriel?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Alright, is um Commissioner Reports? Closest to me?
I don't, I don't have a lot to report, I'm just excited about twenty twenty five and I wanna see what the people of Imperial wanna build and permit for. So we can see what we got coming our way.
I mean, twenty twenty four was was went pretty well.
Yep, I I would agree with that, but yeah, I'm just looking forward to twenty twenty five.
Uh Ms. uh Ms. Body?
I'm looking forward to twenty five, I feel um we have turned the corner. In many aspects in life, so I'm glad to be here, thank you.
Ms. Kuriel?
Yeah. Looking forward to twenty twenty five as well, so it's a fresh year, fresh start.
Other than that, I have anything else? Sir?
Um well, as I introduced myself before, I'm Tommy Garcia, yeah, the new assistant to city manager, excited to be part of Dennis's team and looking forward to working with all you.
I was gonna introduce Tommy, but. Anyway, he took care of that, I I have nothing else to report, I think this is gonna be a fairly busy year for you. There's uh if if the things that have been brought to us as possibilities turn out, then you're gonna have some. Interesting projects to review.
Looking forward to.
I'm just glad to see you back after the holidays, I hope you had a, had a great time with the family. Um and like Dennis said, there's a lot of things coming up, um so just be ready, thank you.
Sir?
I don't really have anything to add, believe it or not, my, but um uh from public services, you probably see a lot of projects going on in the in the city. And along with Mister Moore and myself, we got projects going from even more than you haven't seen yet, so we're excited about all the things that are happening.
Before we go on to Yvonne, I'm sorry to interrupt, but talking about uh public works, where I live. Thank you for the nice smooth streets, but it's only two blocks, okay? So the question mark is, are you guys gonna continue to lay the what the little thin layer that makes things run smooth for a while?
Yeah, I hope I hope to budget, have budget for next year to do a um slurry seal project and crack seal project, yeah, that's the plan, hopefully.
Okay, so what was laid is the end.
That is all we have for now.
Then I think it was in December, late November, December?
Yes.
Okay.
That project is now complete.
Are actually silly waiting to see black on their street.
There's a lot of streets that still need it, um we we tried to address the worst of the worst. With a limited budget.
Right.
Wish we could do hundred percent of the streets, but uh at, the plan is to address it in a proactive manner from now on.
Okay, alright, so when you say next year, are you talking twenty six?
I'm hoping it by the end of this year.
Great.
This, so next fiscal fiscal year, so we're gonna try and do a slurry seal.
Right.
Money, you know, funding uh if it's available.
Thank you.
We, we can probably give maps too, I mean, you've presented some good stuff about some of the projects that we could email to you guys, you can see. Okay, he is, every dollar he can find, he puts it in a road.
Yeah, it was the first priority when I, you know, I got here and so and so the roads were, there were some roads that were in incredibly poor shape. And and I'm feeling blessed that we were able to address those ones. I I went through, I drove every street in the city and I put a number on them, one to ten. And so, in my opinion, so if ten is the worst, we addressed seven, eight, nine and ten. We still have a lot of fives and sixes to address, um but we were able to get a bunch of really bad ones. That have been neglected for, you know, thirty, forty years and there's still more to do, you know, fives, the fives and sixes are still out there, I know.
Did did you have to get a a suspension alignment uh after after some of those streets or?
Yeah. That's how, that's how I ju- that's how I judged them by the suspension.
I also noticed that on Aitken, that was that an emergency repair?
That that is an additional repair be- because um Mister Moore's got a project on Aitken Road to repave it in that area. And so before we repave it, we wanna make sure that we do the undergrounding first, so we're doing an underground sewer project there that's been needed for years and years. So um I'm grateful that the council did approve that um project because it's a very needed project for any future development to the south of that. It wouldn't be possible without this sewer project we're doing right now, uh before we pave it. That's the plan, is do our underground before we pave. Yeah.
Yes, you don't got to tear it up.
Yeah, you don't have an ugly patch.
So shortly after we're done with the sewer line, which is should be in about three, maybe four weeks, you'll start seeing the pavement project start.
Sounds good, I li- I like to, I like to talk that we're having at the beginning of the year, I mean.
So we have something to look forward to.
Yeah, I mean, it it's something that that constantly gets brought up at, you know, the the public gatherings, the streets, the streets and and now this year. Uh regardless of which way you're going, north, south, any any point within Imperial, you're noticing there there's those repairs getting done, so.
Even though it's like a lot more constructions happening too that I'm s- that we're seeing. Uh you also have Alcentro's, the new Alcentro School, too bad it's in Alcentro, but it's city of Imperial, but. But that's also going up and I just seen a lot of construction coming up, so that's good, good for us, good for everyone.
We have another project on on the community development side, it's gonna be Highway eighty six improvements, that's gonna start very soon as well. And the seventh, tenth and fourteenth street projects been a little bit delayed because we added some s- some drainage in there, some storm drains. And so the that's the reason why that project's been a little slower than we wanted to. But again, we wanted to get that in before the new pavement went in, so. So that's, so the storm drain's going, it's it's about ready to be installed and then after that, we can start paving those seven, tenth and fourteenth streets as well.
I just said the gentle reminder to amend the minutes when Ms. Body came in.
Anything?
Um just a reminder, we have um planning commissioner portraits on the thirtieth. For those of you that I've contacted, we have scheduled them. As, as my colleagues um said, we also have a lot of um exciting new projects coming up this year. So we're looking forward to that too.
Nothing for me, happy to see everyone.
Um, all right, so in closing, uh, Happy New Year to everybody, formally say Happy New Year to everybody. I'm glad to see uh everybody we close with is everybody we're opening with uh in the new year. Uh, again, reiterating uh to the to the handful of people, if maybe just one. Um, their concerns about roads, the the public surface roads, uh, it's it's in the works. It took a long time, but it's it's in the works, the city's work has been working on it and gathering. As the staff has brought up, uh, we have a lot of a lot of new things, up and coming things uh here in the in the new year. Some with delays, but I'm sure it'll still get done before the uh, the, was that Dunkin' Donuts? It'll, we'll still, we will beat the Dunkin' Donuts at at the pace that we we get things done, um.
Or the Dutch Brothers.
Is um, that's all I have is uh, like I said, I just want to say uh. Uh, Happy New Year to everybody and uh, I wish everybody a busy and prosperous twenty twenty five. I I enjoyed working with you guys over the last couple of years and look forward to this year. Um, that being said, is I will adjourn this meeting at seven. Oh, one, uh, until February twelfth, uh, next scheduled meeting, February twelfth at six thirty.